Good to go. Well, good. Well, I welcome everybody to the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee, number seven for the year, I believe. And just acknowledge the fact that we have all persons present from the committee, that being Deputy Chairperson councillor Tully, we have Mayor Theresa Harding, Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnic, councillors Jim Madden, Marnie Doyle, and I welcome David Martin for his first official meeting of the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. So, welcome, David. I'll actually also get David to do the acknowledgement of country, if he could, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people.
Thank you, David. I'd like to move that we change the agenda. As it stands, the items on the agenda, just the numerical order, to start with item six. All those in favour? Oh, over second firstly, councillor Madden, thank you. All those in favour?
So, can I ask why? Sorry.
Just the absence of the GM, he's just on his way. Oh, he is here now. Oh, okay. Well, I've got Tony up here now, so if you're happy to proceed and then I'll call up the GM for planning.
Thank you.
All those in favour? Against, it's carried. Will we start with item six? Asset and Infrastructure Services Department Capital Delivery Report for October. Are there any questions that we have of the GM? There being no questions, we'll take the report as read, the recommendation that the report on capital delivery by the Asset and Infrastructure Services Department for the month of October be received and contents noted. Do we have a mover? Yes, councillor Johnic, seconda, councillor Doyle, any discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's great to see that work is on track for the pre-Christmas Stage Three opening and commissioning of the new signalised intersection and pedestrian crossing at the Springfield Parkway and the Springfield Green Bank arterial road. I also note council's bus stop programme funded by the Queensland Government is underway with five stops to be upgraded, which is great to see. Design has been completed and construction is scheduled or underway for Blackstone Road, Sutton Park, Bevel Station and Brisbane Street. And the fifth bus stop location is at Lorry Drive, and that's currently under assessment by Translit, so I think it'll be, these will be much needed bus stops. Working underway on Kerben Channel in Eastwood and Emery Streets, which is great. And work is continuing on the Red Bank Plains Recreation Reserve Car Park Extension and the Shanahan Parade footbridge replacement, as well as the Limestone Park netball facilities court resurfacing, which I think we're all looking forward to the netty, happening for the netties. I'd also like to acknowledge the stormwater drainage rehabilitation work that has been undertaken in the east Ipswich catchment. The site has been cleared along the proposed drainage alignment and fabric and rock backfill added to the washout and erosion areas to upgrade our drainage network. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Just myself personally, I know that there's been challenges on site there at Cameron Park. Are they still hoping for a soft opening next week? Are we aware?
Yes, Chair, there has been some challenges due to the weather, but we're still hopeful that things will proceed.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Well, that aside, if there's no further discussion, all those in favour? Against, that's carried. We'll now move back in line with the remainder of the agenda in order. I ask the General Manager for planning to come forward. Item one being the response to petition residential unit developments along WM Hughes Street, North Ipswich. Is there any questions of the GM or officers?
If I may, Chair, if I may ask through yourself, in the report, I think on page 11 of 91, it talks about the flood regulations. Can I get you to outline how those have changed over the years?
Yes, Mayor, Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services. So, through the chair, the flood regulations have changed quite a lot over time. So, if we reflect back, say, over the last 30 years, flood regulation started out being an approach that essentially responded to historic flooding. So, mapping of historic flood events and having a planning response to those. It then evolved to a theoretical event based upon a probability. And so, that's what I suppose has changed a lot over time, is that in early, earlier planning, the probability of flooding and the acceptability of development in certain locations was either a one-in-10-year flood, a one-in-20-year flood, or a one-in-100. And in some cases, were still relied upon 1974 floodlines. But also, there was a narrative that post-Wyvenhoe, the events of 1974 wouldn't necessarily repeat. And so, particularly with the flood events following 2011, there's been a big shift in flood policy. And that is to look at flooding, not just a two-dimensional line with a an importance or a level of statistics, I suppose you'd say, of saying, well, it's a one-in-100 flood. With that comes a perception that it's flooded now, we're fined for another 100 years. Whilst the background and the statistics and engineering behind that is still sound, the latest and, you know, the most up-to-date flood requirements deal with risk. So, it's not just a matter of looking at a line, it's got to factor in a range of different events. So, a different range of statistical probabilities, it's got to consider climate change, but also it's got to consider risk. And that's that balance that's been missing in the past, where we look at the risks to people and property. We look at, and we've got a lot more detail now, we look at what the velocities of flow, the warning time, evacuation potential. All of those are rebalanced in modern planning, and that's, you know, the summary of the new planning scheme, I suppose.
Thank you, Mr Davy. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr Davy. In the context of what you've just shared with us, how do we ever get to a point where there is no housing development within a floodplain? We've seen with the most recent rainfall, obviously, anxiety levels are high amongst residents that have been living within a flooded area for many, many years. Some have chosen to take up the flood buyback or retrofit, raise their home. But we've also seen with, I guess, the buoyant market in real estate in Ipswich, we've had new residents arrive and purchase properties that are within flooding levels. What does it look like that we prevent this from happening because often it's our most vulnerable residents? For example, Viteroni Street on the weekend, those homes were inundated with water, mostly under their homes, but they did lose a lot of personal property.
Yeah. So, you know, very topical at present, obviously, councillor. The challenge, I suppose, with the history is we've adopted a particular approach over time in respect to what's acceptable and what's not acceptable in terms of development in the floodplain. And we've done so in accordance with the state requirements that existed at the time. And so, if we look at a relatively simple example, but topical and, you know, emotive, is fill of a floodplain. So, in, you know, my early time here, filling the floodplain was acceptable. And the fill in the floodplain was acceptable, subject to engineering modelling to demonstrate that there is no worsening. And so, you can contest the modelling and the theory behind that, but that existed at that time. Following the 2011 flood event and the Flood Commission of Inquiry, we adjusted the planning scheme to address those issues. So, no fill in the floodplain. We've gone beyond that with the draft planning scheme. And so, to the extent of looking at, well, there are areas of the city that unfortunately aren't developed or they have been developed at whatever timeframe, including in the last 20 years, that are in locations that aren't optimal from that flood perspective. And so, the draft planning scheme backzones those properties to limited development zone. That's, you know, somewhat a brave decision in the current climate, given that housing pressure. But the, I suppose, the summary of the approach we've tried to take with the draft scheme is to go, yeah, we've got those areas that were developed at various times. They're affected by either stormwater flow, flooding, or a combination of both. And some of them are staggeringly affected. And so, it's no longer acceptable to just go, well, historically, we've identified that land for development purposes. Therefore, we should maintain that line of thinking despite other things. So, the evolution is to go, those sites, they're not suitable for development anymore. And that might be for the fact that they might be six metres underwater in certain events. They might actually be cut off and isolated in the event of a flood, including isolation for extended periods of time. So, that's the intention. The key is if we are able to enforce those intentions and they are able to be enforced by every authority in terms of council, court and building certifiers. So, some residents and some developers will be very unhappy with the decisions we've put into the draft planning scheme because they are brave decisions and say, no more in those locations.
Thank you.
Yes, councillor Madden.
GM, has an hydrology report been prepared for this DA?
Yes, there has been for this specific development application, the subject of the petition. And officers are assessing that report at present and have sought more clarification from the applicant in the application process so far about the various iterations of that and the findings and, I suppose, basis of that flood report.
So, you're not in a position today to say whether or not the hydrology report made a recommendation, whether these buildings should be built on the site or not built on the site?
The hydrology report supports the proposal. So, that's the report that's been provided by the development, or sorry, developer and the applicant for the developer. So, the key task for us at this point in time is obviously to receive submissions from the community, but to rigorously go through all of the application material with a focus on flooding. And I suppose in putting this report up to date, it's timely from the public notification perspective, but unfortunately delayed. That's on us. We drop the ball in terms of providing an immediate response, but it's still timely, you know, being able to identify the opportunity for the community to make a submission. And then, whilst they're doing that, we will be rigorously assessing all of the material for the application, supported by the views from the community. I can't prejudge the process, but at the right time, we will have a recommendation from officers through to myself and the CEO on how to progress this file, potentially involving a committee and council process, depending upon the volume of submissions.
Are you, with consideration to the hydrology report, are you able to say at this stage whether the construction of these buildings on this site would increase the flood risk for residents on east and west side of the river?
If, to answer that, it may be best to say that the the position put forward by the application, including the reports, is that there will be no effect and that the development can occur without risk to people and property, including residents of the proposed development.
And just one final question. Does council have any intention of seeking an independent hydrology report?
We possibly don't need that. It's maybe not well-known, the extent of flood expertise we have in-house now. But of course, depending upon the circumstances and the complexity of the matter, we may seek support from external consultants, which is not unusual in a development process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Davy. Thanks, Chair.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions? I have a couple. If, would you like, you're right, Mayor, you can go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Mr Davy, through the chair, Mr Davy, do you mind outlining, obviously, the petition has asked for a couple of things. One is to halt all floodplain development and take action to remediate the floodplain, to restore its flood capacity and change the floodplain operational works to be impact assessed, not code assessed. Do you mind outlining the state legislation and what that controls and then what council controls for this particular development?
Yes, of course, Mayor. So, the state set the planning system and say, this is what councils need to do to implement planning and development assessment. So, part of that is a planning scheme. The planning scheme is, in essence, legislation. Now, the planning scheme sets down the level of assessment of every application. There's tables in the planning scheme that identify that. So, that's not a flippant decision or even a considered decision by an officer for each application. It's done when the planning scheme's set. That can be changed, of course, but it requires an amendment to the planning scheme to do that. So, in almost all cases through the city, works files or works applications, including the term operational works, would be code assessable. What wouldn't be code assessable is the proposal behind that. So, before you get to the earthworks part of it, you've got to consider what the actual proposal on the land is. So, in many cases, those are impact assessable, depending upon the type of the proposal. So, that's where that setting is. So, we can, of course, review things with the draft scheme and continue to review it based upon community sentiment. But the preference of the state is, and the state legislation, is that things are code assessable where they line up with the intent and the outcome sort. But also, code assessment provides a very confined path to assess an application. So, it's got to be assessed against specific benchmarks. If it complies, you approve it. If it doesn't comply, you refuse it. So, in some ways, a code assessment is beneficial in comparison to an impact. So, then, impact assessment is that broader assessment, which includes public notifications. So, I think the request from the petition is that all floodplain developments and all fill in the floodplain is essentially impact assessable. That's not the basis of the current planning scheme and it's not the basis of the draft planning scheme. It's certainly something we could look at, but it would be a little inconsistent with the intent of the planning legislation surrounding drafting schemes. The second question about the, sorry, that was the second question in terms of code versus impact. The first question is about, well, let's halt all floodplain development and take action to remediate the floodplain and restore capacity. So, the planning system doesn't provide for local government to just prohibit applications or to refuse to accept them. So, regardless of the council's view on it or an officer's view of it, if an application comes in from a developer, we're obliged to receive it and we're obliged to process it in accordance with the requirements. We must not prejudge at any point in that time. We've got to let it go through its processes in a impartial way. So, the planning scheme policy evolution that we've proposed with the draft planning scheme does seek to address part of point one, which is to avoid inappropriate development in inappropriate locations. And that includes, of course, changes to the floodplain, but also putting more people in or at risk of flooding. The balance of the two questions, I suppose, now is a remediation of the floodplain. And that's a broader consideration, which shouldn't be just a local government responsibility, in my opinion. The floodplain is, you know, every river, every creek. Of course, we can avoid, and that's the idea of the planning scheme, is to avoid those areas and avoid making things worse. I suppose it's a bigger question is to say how much remediation we do when not all of the issues that are currently existing in floodplains are created by councils.
So, may I ask, Mr Davy, through the chair, basically, the petition is looking at two main development applications. One is code assessable and was approved back in September last year for that, that's 7579/2022 CA. What does that approval actually mean? Does it mean they can go ahead and build? Or just says it's creating lots and into single residential? Whereas the other one's code assessable and obviously having units.
So, code or impact assessable doesn't change whether or not someone can go and develop the land. So, both types of applications can develop the land. It's just for different purposes. So, when we look at these, and it may seem confusing to the community when one application will be code and one will be impact. There's a lot of language around this, but essentially, the reference of code or impact is the process. It's the way we go through the assessment process. The more important things to look at with these examples is, well, what's the thing the developer is applying for? And of course, what's the thing we've approved? So, in any case, if we've approved what's called a development permit, that allows development to be undertaken. In other cases, we've included a preliminary approval or been sought to provide a preliminary approval. Now, in almost all cases, a preliminary approval sets a master plan. It doesn't allow development to occur. And so, in some cases, and if I use a standard subdivision, the first application for a subdivision might include a master plan, and that master plan might be impact assessable. And it might say, there's up to 1,000 lots in this area. That's the chance to have a say. The 20 applications that follow might likely be code assessable. And so, that's where it's important when the impact assessment opportunity comes up to have the say. And that's, I suppose, a similar example to the proposal for the larger set of units, the 472 units. So, that's 11625 of 2023. That includes a preliminary approval, which is setting the tone and the master plan for the future of the area. And it includes a development permit for only part of that.
Okay. So, with the one that was, I guess, 7579, which is obviously looking at 91, obviously, residential dwellings, the developer has approval to proceed with that, or they still have to come back to council with what they, with greater plans?
No, in that case, they were approved to proceed. What they required afterwards was civil works approval, operational works approval. That's for earthworks and internal construction, building and plumbing approval.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Yes, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Chair. If I may, one final question for Mr Davy. So, very separately to the flood buyback programme, which we know applies to residential properties and is funded by the state government. If we put that to one side, in relation to this, I guess, parcel of land, are there any options at law for council to resume the land and dedicate it as reserve, never to be built on, under the local government legislation, a resumption?
So, a resumption, in order to occur, my understanding is that a resumption requires a strategic purpose that council has already identified. And so, that, if we use a simple example, is a road. If council's identified that a road needs to be wider, then we have a strategic plan for that road to occur. We then go, it needs widening. We acquire the land either through a negotiation or compulsory acquisition. We therefore can't use compulsory acquisition powers to just do, I suppose, and acquire whatever we want. In this case, we haven't got a strategic plan identifying this land for open space purposes. The planning scheme identifies it for, in part, open space, which is essentially a strip along the riverbank, but the balance for some form of development, a combination of different development process or potentials.
Is there, is there an opportunity to advocate to the state government to open up this as an option under future flood buyback, a very separate arm for acquisition of commercial properties?
Yeah, there is certainly opportunity to advocate to the state and the Commonwealth government regarding the buyback programme. That could be applied, and I think what you're suggesting is if there's development sites with expectations or potential, that if that potential is realised, will create a problem for the future. Well, yeah, there could be a fund. That would be quite a good use of monies. And at the same time, I suppose it'd be remiss of me to suggest that the current buyback programme only deals with the worst of the worst, so to speak, excuse the language, but it's the most at-risk parts of the city. There are certainly other parts of the city where the risk may not be as significant as mapped in the current analysis. But those are other premises that flood frequently, that might flood at significant depth, that, you know, would warrant a continuation of the current buyback programme.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. If there's no further questions from the floor, just firstly, just, we've had quite a bit of discussion around the actual application that's for council, and it's currently in the public notification stage. I just want to, you've said that, obviously, the applicant developer has suggested through their own reports that there is a possibility that there is, uh, a possibility for the development on the site, but, but that's not the end of it. What, what happens after the, the public notification period?
Yes, uh, so on the, at the close of the public notification period, officers will collate all the submissions to review them. But what's happening right now and will continue to happen is a detailed assessment of the complete application. So, um, theoretically, we move into a phase at the twentieth of December where we start to consider making a decision on the application. And, uh, that decision process is generally something between twenty and thirty-five business days, depending upon the circumstances and assuming that the developer has sorted out all of the issues with, with state government as well. Uh, so that means we move into a, a process of finalising our review of every bit of material, um, and putting a recommendation together. In anticipation of the attention this file is likely to get, um, at, at twenty submissions, it comes back to this committee and council for a decision. So that won't occur at this stage until, at, at the earliest, I'd say February, it is a, as a rough estimate. Um, if the file happens to get fifty or more submissions, in addition to the officer's scrutiny of this file, um, and even potentially a peer review scrutiny of this file, there'll be an independent decision review panel triggered. Now, so what that means is the officers finalise their assessment with all of the available information and the expertise internally or with peer review support. We provide that to a panel of experts for them to review the officer's recommendation. And, uh, this has happened a few times with previous projects and the information on it's available on our website, of course. But that, uh, panel would review the application and potentially make, uh, suggestions back on the position of the officers, the recommendation and the assessment process to see if there's anything that's been missed, overlooked or should be improved. And then that combined material comes before the committee and council for a decision.
I think for that, so what I was predominantly getting at was the fact that it's not a fait accompli. Just because their report says it's good, doesn't necessarily mean that that's what the outcome may be.
Correct. So there is no guarantees, um, on anything in this world. And the developer can seek and, um, request and support. And, um, that's fine. That's part of the process. It's up to us to impartially, thoroughly and accurately assess and consider the application and put a recommendation to the council.
And while this report is not so much about the development application, but the petition, um, I just query, um, recommendation B sees a written response will be provided to the petitioners, uh, encouraging them to make, uh, properly made submissions, uh, for that development or any other development that comes up in that area, I imagine. Um, but the petition is, uh, who is that? Is that all the people who have signed the petition or is that, uh, somebody else?
So with a petition, the lead petitioner is essentially the coordinator of that process. So, um, we would provide written advice back to that petitioner with an expectation that they could, um, communicate that to petitioners. And of course, some of them might choose to, to listen to this, um, session. Uh, we've already made contact with the lead petitioner to ensure that there is awareness, at least for him and for some of the active petitioners that he works with, that the applications are public display, the timeframes, and of course, what they need to do to make a properly made submission.
So I guess in essence, uh, recommendation B, should it read, be provided to the lead petitioner rather than petitioners?
Yes, yep, that would be accurate.
Okay, if that's the case, um, is there any further questions? Um, well, uh, while as Chair, I'm not necessarily, um, um, keen to move recommendations as Chair, but I think, uh, with respect to that, recommendation A is a receiving note and recommendation B. Yes, I was going to suggest that with the amendment, um, that a written response be provided to the lead petitioner. Uh, encouraging them to make properly made submissions during the public notification period. That's moved by Councilor Doyle and seconded by Councilor Tully. Has that been changed, Vicky?
Yes.
Okay, all good. Uh, any discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding.
Um, just want to thank you, Chair, for allowing me to ask the, those questions. Uh, and I think it's very important along here. And I'd like to thank the one hundred residents of the Wood End, Moore's Pocket, Ipswich Basin Pocket area that have brought their concerns to council with a petition. Our city is growing and we are also a city that floods. So I understand the concern from residents on how we develop. This development is currently moving through the legislated approvals process and is currently at the public notification stage. I would strongly urge residents to consider making a submission as part of this process as properly made submissions around any objections to the planning aspect of the proposal will be considered by council. And that public notification period opened on the seventh of November, goes to the nineteenth of December. And I note that there are thirteen there at the moment. Um, I find that the community thinks that council can just stop any development application, uh, partway through, but that's not how it works when it comes to the, the legislation. We must go through the full process of an application to be assessed under the planning scheme and the planning framework for how the developments are assessed is set by the state government. So anyone is, is able to put any development that they want, uh, for their land and council has to assess it in accordance with the, 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 um, the Planning Act and our planning scheme. We've asked for the state government to join with council to explain to the community how growth is planned for the southeast Queensland and how the development applications are assessed. I also note, and I'll probably go ask, uh, Mr. Davy again, I note that you talked about the independent decision review panel requiring fifty submissions, but I think if council's also requested, um, that's something that can be done as well. Can I get a clarification on that, please?
Yes, the, the current framework for development applications provides for, uh, the council to request that matters of strategic importance be considered by myself and the chief executive officer for consideration.
Thank you very much. So thank you very much for the petition. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, Councilor Madden.
Chair, just like to say something, something just generally about, uh, um, development applications, um, uh, where they do go to public consultation. And last night we had a meeting at, uh, the, uh, Walloon QCWA Hall. I won't go into the details, but it was to dis- discuss a project similar to this where residents have had, um, concerns about this. And as we said at the meeting, we, where we explained the development application and explained how to make a properly made submission, encouraged people to do so with the advice that unless we received, uh, twenty properly made submissions, the matter would not come before, uh, council. Uh, but I'd like to thank, uh, Brett Davy for attending that meeting. Uh, it got a bit wild and woolly for a while, but, uh, between us, we, I think we kept it under control. But I'd really, really like to thank the residents who attended that meeting and showed their passion for their community. Um, it's not just about, you know, somebody opposing a development application. It's about people being involved in their community. And I can tell you, the QCWA Hall at, uh, Walloon was packed last night with people who were involved in their community. We could be, we could have been talking about establishing a football club and we probably would have got the same amount of people there. And it was, it was wonderful to see so many people come to a public meeting to discuss something of importance to council. Thank you, Chair.
Councilor Doyle.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, um, just want to acknowledge, um, the petitioners, um, for, um, their work. As Council Madden just said, um, it's a community response. Uh, as a divisional councillor for, um, multiple flooded suburbs, um, I have, um, empathy, understanding and compassion for my residents. Uh, my family home was on the river at Basin Pocket and it went under and seventy-four. I then watched my mother, uh, watch the river rise every time there was downfall. Um, many of those residents are still living in those older suburbs, um, and the, the wound is, is still open. Um, disturbingly, I see young families moving into those areas as well who, um, I guess don't quite understand, um, what living on a floodplain actually looks like. Uh, so I just, and, and just, um, you know, I've worked with a number of these residents for the last two years trying, um, to help them navigate their anxiety, but also, um, their thirst for information. So thank you, um, to Mr. Davy and his department who always provide great information, um, so that I can, um, give detailed responses to my residents and help them understand what a properly made submission looks like. Um, at the end of the day, we have to, um, advocate hard but rely on the, the process that we have in place here at council for the right outcome for our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Martin?
Yeah, I'd also like to concur with what Councilor Doyle just said. That's well said, Money. We all, what they say around the table, have friends and family that have been flood affected and we have a responsibility, not just to ourselves, but to the community, to allay fears. And as Council Madden said, I was at that meeting last night at the Goona and I'd also like to say, Mr. Davy really handled himself very well because there were, uh, a number of hostile people there. I was actually out at the Goona on Saturday and there are some concerns from a lot of residents there. And yeah, well done Brett, you did a real good job. And thank you, Council Madden, for organising the event. And I'd like to say, moving forward, I think that they are really good community meetings to allay the fears of residents and just explain what can and can't be done and to go through the proper process. Because whilst it's good that there's a petition with a hundred signatures, it's potentially disappointing if those petitioners don't actually take the time to write a submission. Otherwise, as has been said before, if we don't get twenty, uh, properly made submissions, we don't get a say in what happens. So I'd like to concur with everything that's been said and think we do have a responsibility to make wise and smart decisions moving forward for the future. And I'd like to think that the people of Ipswich have put their faith and trust in us to do that and hope moving forward, we can do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, Councilor Tully.
Can I just clarify that issue about the properly made submissions? If it's a code assessable application, no applica, no submissions properly made, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So the, the, uh, application that's currently on public display, the subject, one of the applications, the subject of this, uh, petition is impact. So it will have properly no submissions. But yes, there is an issue where, uh, if an application is code assessable and we do get submissions, they're, they're not considered properly made because that application would never go on public display.
Yeah, so you could have five hundred objectives and, um, yeah, well, it's just considered by officers, not by councillors.
They're not given appeal rights, should the matter be?
Oh, well, yeah, they don't have appeal rights anyway, yeah.
Yes, that's the other point. There's no appeal rights. Uh, and I suppose in the, the context of code assessment, there is a time imperative that comes with code assessment in, in that if council doesn't, or council, including the officers, don't make a decision within the statutory timeframe, it's deemed to be approved. So there is, uh, quite a lot of pressure to finalise an assessment quickly.
Yeah, I understand that. It ju- just seems to be a, you know, the, the, in all other respects, the submissions are properly made, they're relevant, they, uh, relate to the thing, but they're not properly made in the sense that they, um, it's not an impact assessable, um, application.
Yes, correct.
Any further discussion? Uh, just to finalise, uh, look, I think we're all in agreement here that a line on a map doesn't necessarily stop water. And floods from time to time will be above and below previous floods. And that, um, uh, nineteen seventy-four, which has been regarded as the worst of them uh, by most people, is certainly not the worst that Ipswich has ever suffered. But since two thousand and eleven, there has been a greater understanding of local hydrology and the impacts of floods on our city. And further, uh, our recent review and preparation and of the draft two thousand and twenty-four planning scheme certainly highlights a greater need for development to prove itself against possible flood impacts. And I note on page, uh, thirteen of ninety-one in our, uh, agenda items today and fourteen, um, those particular highlighted, um, dot points within the planning scheme which relate specifically to the petition as raised. I commend, uh, the instigator of the petition, uh, and those who supported it for being heard on this issue and the desire for greater scrutiny of these developments. Uh, with this in mind, I'd encourage those petitioners to make their concerns heard through the public notification period for the current development at twenty-two and forty-eight WM Hughes Street, North Ipswich. It's currently in the public notification period and all properly made submissions will be considered. And of course, we've had quite a bit of discussion about that, that this morning already, um, that if properly made, properly made submissions are received during that notification period, um, those, um, submitters do have appeal rights. Um, I might take the opportunity to send a copy of this report to the petitioner as well, the lead petitioner, for his information in particular, so he can see the highlighted elements of the draft planning scheme for his information. Uh, if there's no further discussion, uh, I put the recommendation to the vote, all those in favour. Against, that's carried unanimous. Thank you. Item two, which is the minutes of the previous meeting of fourteenth of November. Uh, would someone like to move that that's an accurate reflection of the meeting? Thank you, Councilor Madden, uh, seconder. Um, Councilor Johnic, thank you. Uh, all those in favour? Against, that's carried. Item three refers to City of Ipswich Local Housing Plan. Um, is there any questions of the general manager or officers? Uh, thank you, Councilor Johnic.
Um, thanks, Chair. Just in relation to the plan, and I congratulate the officers for putting this together. It's a, um, it's a subject that's close to my heart and obviously there's a lot of our residents that are being affected, um, by the housing crisis at the moment. Um, I'm just wondering, because we have, the outcomes are really unfunded by this, um, plan, what's the best course of action? Like, out of the recommendations or the next steps in the plan? Like, uh, like a summary of the best direction for us to start?
Uh, I suppose the core, uh, element here is firstly awareness. And that is, when you look at the, uh, level of housing that's produced across Ipswich now, it's, uh, I wouldn't say vanilla, but it's very homogeneous. So it's greenfield development or development anywhere is essentially the same recipe. It's a house on land of various sizes. The house is generally a three or four bedroom house with a double garage and two bathrooms. That's the, the bread and butter product that we're getting. Um, but that doesn't necessarily ma- meet the full spectrum of housing that's needed from a variety of perspectives. And that's from the people that are actually going to live in those homes, including whether or not those people can afford those homes. So the Housing Action Plan identifies that we need a diversity of housing and that we, in that diversity, it's not just about providing affordable housing, but it's providing housing for those growing segments of the community, say, you know, single people, um, the aging and also, um, so, you know, couples without kids. The other thing to look at is the, that in certain communities, there is not a diversity of housing. So, uh, if you look at, you know, uh, a suburban Silkstone, if you were to say the yard that's twelve hundred square metres is now too much for me, kids have moved out, I can't manage that. Um, firstly, that big bit of yard is underutilised potentially and it might be, you know, primed for an additional dwelling. But also, where do those residents move within Silkstone that gives them, say, a unit or another housing style that's not so high maintenance? So that's, I suppose, in a nutshell, what the Housing Action Plan analyses. It then looks at, um, societal and economic factors. And there's a series of actions in there that are, are suggested. And we've got some more background material that was informing for the document. We need to work out internally what we can do, uh, and what we can do ourselves. So there are some elements of the Housing Action Plan that are actually addressed by the Draft Planning Scheme. Uh, some of that narrative that I've described is addressed by the Draft Planning Scheme, but there are things that are beyond our control and that are not our core function. For example, providing a, a range of affordable housing opportunities or housing that's supplemented for people, that's where we need state involvement. So, uh, you know, I ha- I haven't got a, a budget specifically for implementation of this. The team, uh, moving forward, will need to work through what that looks like uh, and how we could consider allocating budget, noting our other, um, competing priorities on this task. And it's worth noting that there are other local governments that have been preparing these plans for provision to the state. So we'll have to work with the state directly on, on those outcomes.
And I just noted, um, under the priority actions, the council to investigate opportunities with private businesses wanting to invest in delivery of infrastructure, um, to facilitate the housing solutions. Um, is there a way that we can prepackage some developments that would stimulate the type of housing that we don't have currently for those smaller families?
Uh, yes, of course, there is. And we've already started down that path with, with, uh, waiving and discounts of fees for attached housing developments that are consistent with the scheme. Uh, and then, of course, we've started talking about, uh, the hotel, uh, market. But with that comes a consideration of, well, all types of those attached products. And when I say attached product, it's housing that's connected together and hopefully goes up. And so the key question is, we can do things to help incentivise that. Some of that might include us, say, wa- Some of that might include us, say, waiving infrastructure charges. That means that that money has to come from somewhere else. The state are actually running some programmes now to pay infrastructure charges for those developments. But we've looked at, if we waive infrastructure charges, is that the magic source that gets the diversity? It's probably not. We've looked at parking, does that do it? Probably not. But if we do a couple of things and the state are able to do a couple of things, it might just be enough to start to shift the focus of housing.
Thanks, Brett.
Any further questions? Yes, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr Davy, for the report. It is so important. And I do note, under monitoring and reporting on page 30, the recommendation that relevant internal officers and officers from the state agencies could focus on the LHAP to make considered effort in the space of housing provision. And it's proposed that the manager city designer oversee that progress and report annually to council and state government on the progress. I see that as being really, really important and invaluable. It's our opportunity, Ipswich City Council, to advocate and have that direct line to the state, where we know the current state of our local market economically and how it's changing and what's relevant. So I particularly like that part of it. I just have a question, it's probably further to what councillor Johnic just touched on. Recently, at the LGAQ conference, we had a really great presentation by a panel on infill housing. And we heard from the city of Moreton Bay, a lot like us, current market conditions are generally not supportive of higher density infill development. We've certainly seen that within our CBD here, there just isn't any appetite for a high-rise, high-density residential to date. We heard from Bull and Bear that both macro and local market conditions drive what development looks like and local realisation values are a key part. And then Urbus talked about dwelling diversity increasing. It is on the increase, but it's not enough yet. So further to what councillor Johnic said, our sweet spot almost, if I can take Ipswich Central as an example, I think in the presentation, they mentioned Class One, single dwellings. So attached housing, townhouses. I just wanted to double check that our planning scheme, our new planning scheme, supports that approach. If we're not going to attract or see the high-density residential in Ipswich Central, does our plan support perhaps a multi-townhouse development?
Yes and no. And Nathan, the manager of city designs here, could probably answer the question in more detail than I could. However, there is a decision point that requires consideration on some of this. And that is, if we have a site that's prime, if we have a site that's prime for development and we've got an intention that it be five to eight stories, for example, and someone approaches us and says, it's not viable for me to do five to eight stories, but I could do three.
Yes.
So at that point, do we go, let's take what we can get? Or do we say, no, we don't want three, we're going to hold out for five to eight? Because we don't, like, once three goes, it's going to be somewhat difficult to redevelop. So that is an issue that the state need to look at as well. But it's something that we've been challenged on over the years and the concept of doing an interim-style development versus ultimate. Those are some of the issues that we can start to look at with the Housing Action Plan. Because in my opinion, the current planning scheme and the draft planning scheme allows us to do both because planning is a performance-based process. The key is, is that the right choice?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any further questions? The recommendations include, as you said, councillor Doyle, about this being reported on annually. So firstly, recommendation A is that we adopt the LHAP in Attachment One, that the actions be progressed and reported annually to council and that the actions be further developed and refined to continue to address housing challenges as they occur, I imagine, in the Ipswich local government area. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Doyle, seconded councillor Johnic. Any discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding.
Thank you, Chair. There is a need around the country and right here in Ipswich for housing diversity and also affordability in the right locations. We need housing that is close to jobs, transport and services to meet the needs of everyone in the community at each stage of their life. As Queensland's fastest-growing city over the next 20 years, this draft policy is timely, this draft plan, sorry, is timely to address our city's current and emerging housing challenges. This draft plan has been developed in response to the state government's Housing and Homelessness Action Plan 2021 to 2025, and with the support of the Local Government Association of Queensland and the state government. It will allow us to identify ways to address the specific housing requirements of the Ipswich community. Housing should be affordable and meet the needs of household sizes and types with consideration to visability and accessibility. And the one thing that really strikes me here is the fact that things are changing, that the composition of families now, how people are living, is changing. So we just don't need to build the four-bedroom, two-bathroom, double-garage housing. We need to have affordable housing and housing diversity for people so they're not locked into renting forever and to also to meet their needs for, you know, that lifestyle. I think council will work collaboratively with all levels of government and help coordinate responses with the private, not-for-profit sectors and LGAQ and as well as relevant state government agencies. I do note in many of the recommendations that to unlock affordable housing, we do need trunk infrastructure to be delivered by the state and the federal governments. Without that, public transport and other trunk infrastructure, it simply can't happen. With, in the last term, there was a regional planning committee for South East Queensland and I understand there'll be a new one done. One of the big pushes from all the councils in South East Queensland was for the state government to lead an education piece on the changing nature of family makeups and therefore the greater need for single and dwellings for people with no children as well. So that sort of didn't eventuate. I'd love to see that come forward so we can have that consultation because we often get feedback from residents saying, why are you building these townhouses? Why are you doing this? Why is it on a 300 or 400 square metre block? So I think we need to have that conversation with our community, explain that the needs are changing and we need to plan now for what those changes will be in that in 10, 20 or 30 years' time. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Madden.
Chair, I just wanted to highlight, given that we're discussing the City of Ipswich Local Housing Action Plan, I wanted to highlight a project that council recently received funding for that hasn't been mentioned previously in council. Council received funding pursuant to the Housing Support Programme, which is a $500 million Australian government programme that funds initiatives and it's opened, was opened to all local, state, territory governments across Queensland. And I'd like to congratulate the council officers for receiving funding for this programme. And I just wanted to outline what it dealt with. It's a programme, it's called the Walloon-Theguna Structural Plan 2024, but it really extends from Carabin to Rosewood. So we call it the Western Corridor. And it's going to, and we talk in terms of future growth in Ipswich, often centralised on the Ripley Priority Development Area. But this is like an unofficial priority development area, where we expect substantial growth over the next 10 to 20 years, population increase possibly of something like 70,000 people. It's like the forgotten aspect of growth in Ipswich. And we're currently, council officers are currently preparing a report. And what this will mean is that we're going to identify the area in that corridor where we want subdivisions, separate from the areas where we don't want subdivisions, what is colloquially called the urban footprint. And I just wanted to congratulate council officers for obtaining the grant. And I hope that at some stage in the future, when we progress the matter further, Mr Davy, perhaps we could receive a report to this committee about how we go with that programme. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Just wanted to highlight something that perhaps isn't lost on many people, but concerning nonetheless, that as opposed to the 1980s, where the average dwelling price was just under two times the average household income, it is now, some 40 years, just in 40 years, five times the average household income. And that is likely to rise and continue to rise up to the 2032 Olympics. So, you know, if we don't look at this more closely, it's going to become the great Australian nightmare rather than the great Australian dream to own your own home. And this draft Local Housing Action Plan is informed by both evidence and stakeholder expertise. It details some 40 proposed priority actions that our council can take to support and encourage or in the support and encouragement of housing availability and affordability in our city. It provides a mechanism to bring together all stakeholders with influence on housing outcomes to work collaboratively to deliver better outcomes. And it will enable this council to partner with state and private and community sectors to progress priority actions for the benefit of the community. So I commend those who put this report together, all of the expertise behind it, and I commend it to the council or to this committee. All those in favour? Against? That's carried unanimous. Item four is an exercise of delegation report. Any questions? The recommendation is to receive and note the contents. Any discussion? So firstly, I'll move it. Somewhere, oh, sorry, I'll ask for it to be moved, moved by councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Johnic. Is there any discussion? No discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? Against, carried unanimous. Item five, court action status report. Is there any questions? If there are no questions, it is a receiving note report. I put the motion, sorry, I asked the motion be moved. Someone like to move the motion? Move councillor Tully, seconded councillor Martin. Any discussion? There being no discussion? All those in favour? Against, that's carried. I believe that is the end of the reports on the agenda. Notices of motion? I don't believe there are any. Matters arising? Again, I don't believe there is any. Is there any questions or general business? There being none? The, do I need to?
May I suggest we come back at 10.30, Chair?
10.30?
For the Finance and Governance Committee? I'll just check with the Chair of that.
How is the time?
10.20, have you had a suggestion?
10.25? Did we have a motion 10.20? So moved by councillor Tully, seconded councillor, Mayor Harding. All those in favour? Against, that's carried. And the business, sorry, the meeting is now closed. Thank you.